City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Miller.
Here.
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Nine zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, August 17th, meeting of the Evanston City Council. First item on the agenda is the Mayor's announcements, and I have two. One is the 2015 Community Picnic will take place from noon to 4:00 PM on Sunday, August 23rd, in Ingraham Park, located right here, west of the Morton Civic Center, 2100 Ridge. Come celebrate Evanston, diversity, and going back to school. Bring the whole family for hours of entertainment, fun activities, free food, and giveaways. Admission is free. And I have a letter from David Orr. Dear Mayor Tisdale, what a pleasant surprise. When I was riding my bike along the lake between Rogers Park and Evanston, to discover the sidewalks were fixed, making for a much more pleasant ride. Thank you for that. My best, David. So congratulations, Mr. Mayworm, and company wherever you are. Next, City Manager, do you have announcements?
Madam Mayor, I do. I'd like to ask Lonny Jeschke, our Fleet Manager, to come up. As many of you know, Lonny is leaving us, but before he snuck out, I wanted to take a few minutes to talk a little bit about what he's done for the city of Evanston. Lonny started as our Fleet Manager in August of 2007, immediately dug in and took control of the overall fleet operations by upgrading and fully utilizing our Fleet Information Management System. In year one, he developed a 10-year vehicle replacement plan and associated funding requirements, which has kept us up to date on an annual basis and continues to be used annually by our budget team to make sure we are where we're at with the fleet. Over time, he has made recommendations for over 253 vehicle purchases, and that equates to about 69 percent of our fleet. And that's really the reason I wanted him to come up, because that's a huge accomplishment that in a relatively short period of time, that we were able to replace about 70 percent of our fleet, has saved us a lot of money. It included two aerial ladder trucks, each about a million dollars apiece. So that's probably been one of his biggest contributions. Another big contribution is the work he's done to right-size or reduce the size of our fleet, which has been by 27 units, so 27 vehicles, solid waste packers when we made the transition to just picking up recycling. So those were important accomplishments, but perhaps the one I'm most proud of is the work that he's done to have our fleet designated as one of the 100 best fleets in North America among all municipal governments. So Lonny, on behalf -- On behalf of all your coworkers here at the city of Evanston, we're absolutely going to miss you. You've done a tremendous job bringing our fleet at least into the 20th century, if I dare not say the 21st century, and we appreciate that very much, and I want to present you with a plaque.
I want to thank Mr. Jeschke for his education in different types of engines that we put in our fleet and in the greening of our fleet as well, so in working through the new technologies and how to bring more fuel-efficient to different types of fuel economies. So I propose that tonight we buy Mr. Jeschke a Street Sweeper, a Bobcat, and a Ford Escape, I mean, for his department, but I hope we'll do that tonight in honor of you, so thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. It's been my great pleasure and pride to serve this great city of Evanston for the last eight years. I've learned a lot, made a lot of friends. We've made some great achievements together, and if I didn't have your help and support, that would have never happened. So thank you very much, and thank you for everything you've done for me. Thank you.
Next, Karen Lyons, our Library Director, is here with some good news.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Clerk Green, members of the council, and City Manager Bobkowitz, Karen Danzig Lyons, for your Evanston Public Library, proudly announcing that we are one of 75 libraries that is receiving a National Endowment for the Arts grant, and we are creating our first-ever community-wide city reading program. But Evanston deserves the best, and it deserves more than just one book to read, and so we're building out nine months' worth of programming around Into the Beautiful North, which is an amazing book that I'm listening to, and you can listen to it, too. We have hundreds of copies available in English, we have copies in Spanish, and the programming will be in both English and Spanish, but we're partnering with District 65 and 202 to engage children of different ages around the topic of immigration, and we're also working with some community-based organizations to have cultural programming. So it's going to be a lot of fun beginning in September, and I hope you're able to join us. I've got flyers up there for you, and I'm hoping that if this goes well, then -- we need more flyers? Okay. I'm hoping if this goes well that this will be a model for future community-wide reading programs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes my announcements.
Thank you. City Clerk, do you have communications for us?
There's no communication for today, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Just glad to be back.
Next is public comment. The first two speakers are Dan Coyne and Jeff Smith. You each have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and City Manager, and council members. Dan Coyne, property owner at 535 Custer, representing Reba Place Mennonite Services and Housing. We're a non-for-profit social service agency that's been helping out the 8th and 9th Ward the past 60 years. We want to voice our support for the repurposing condo development plan that I think is being presented to you for introduction today at 609 South Boulevard. Mr. Jeff Scales, the new owner and developer, met with Alderman Miller and several of our Reba Mennonite Service leaders, including our Director of Affordable Housing, Mr. Adrian Willoughby, and also our CEO, Dr. Alan Howe. We believe Mr. Scales will make a great neighbor that will enhance our community. Given his plan to include 16 off-street parking and the building's location next to the CTA South Boulevard Station, we believe the plan warrants zoning relief. He also hopes to sell the units well under $300,000, rendering new homeowners affordability in Evanston terms. This price would rise sky-high if only 12 units were built. Thank you for this consideration.
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jeff Smith, 2724 Harrison. I'm going to approve I'm a politician by touching the third rail of Evanston politics. The item that I'd like to address is the Talmadge Lighting Contract. As most of you know, I'm a preservationist. I've been before you fighting for the preservation of some of the beautiful items we have in our cityscape in Evanston. Some of you who know me even closer know that I'm a collector who values and venerates old items, history itself, and I have a particular fondness for the time when anything that was made of metal in the United States was also made in Chicago. That said, I would be happy if I never again saw a contract for the purchase of these street poles in Evanston City Council agenda, because the simple fact is they're terrible, terrible lighting, and their fundamental purpose should be to provide lighting on the streets of Evanston. They put too much light where it's not needed, and they don't put enough light where it is needed, namely on sidewalks and on streets. We're largely lighting up the second floors of residences where they emit a horizontal glare, and the light is going into trees where insects and birds need the dark to recover, and going into plants that need that time of dormancy for some of their cellular processes to go on. The light goes into the eyes of drivers and cyclists, actually making it less safe on the street, because your pupils are going to contract in response to the light that's directed into them. And excess light is not just an urban annoyance. We all maybe remember the fight that took place in the 1970s over these lights, and I'm not going to deny that to many. Many, they're beautiful, or quaint, or have some nostalgic value, but in the four or five decades since, we have documented scientific evidence on the negative physical and mental effects that excess light and the Chicago metropolitan area is overlit. You can see it from space. We're one of the most highly-lit places on the planet. So it's a danger to spend $4,500 per unit on something that's really not doing its job and that isn't really consistent with the commitment to the environment, with the commitment to public safety, with the commitment to a forward-looking, green-thinking type of city that we are. So I just want to start that conversation, and what committee it goes to, what task force, et cetera, involve all the stakeholders, find a solution that venerates the past, perhaps keeps the old street poles in place in places where people are really dedicated to them, but let's move forward to something that's safer for our pedestrians and our drivers and our citizens, and allows people and birds and even maybe some of these cicadas to sleep at night. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Jason Hayes, Janad Riske, Lonny Wilson, and Bennett Johnson.
Good evening, Jason Hayes. I live at 712 Dobson Street in the grade 8th ward. I'm also a member of the Evanston Fire Department, Local 742. I just wanted to address council regarding the proposals for the 2015 budget adjustments. One of the main things that is in that proposal discusses furlough days and removing holiday and comp time pay from police and firefighters. And my understanding is that this is just a wording that's the way it is in the memo, but something to bear in mind is that there are collective bargaining agreements in place. These wages are set, and you can't just arbitrarily remove them. My understanding is that what the City Manager is hoping for is approval from the City Council to approach the various collective bargaining agencies to break open these contracts and mutually discuss them. And I think that's fine, but just wanted to make sure that that is clear in the proposals going forward, that what you're looking for is not necessarily guarantee of said savings or what have we, but a negotiation between parties. Second of all, similar issue, wanted to address the proposed hiring freeze. The thing to bear in mind is that there are a lot of services that the city provides that needs manpower, and in order to provide this manpower with a hiring freeze, that's going to rely on greater overtime, more funds, and as long as the calculations are being made so that there are actual savings from a hiring freeze, that's fine. But if you're going to burn through whatever proposed savings by having to pay overtime to make sure that the services are provided, that doesn't, you know, it's robbing Peter to pay Paul, and I don't see the sense in that. And finally, while I appreciate that the Northwestern project permits fell through and will not be happening, and that has blown a $1.2 million hole in our budget, having that budget deficit made up on the backs of the employees by going after furlough days or going after comp time or compensation, that's poor planning, that, you know, I feel bad that the city is now $1.2 million short of their permits fees that they were budgeting, but that has nothing to do with the employees who are doing the work, who are trying, you know, to make ends meet, who are citizen employees, who are residents, who do pay their tax dollars, you know. You just can't balance the budget on the backs of your workers alone. So I would encourage you to examine all the opportunities and all the options that are out there. And again, the other point to make, too, is if you do break open these collective bargaining agreements, you've got to make sure that your savings are not burned up through legal fees and other issues that are incidental. So it's not an easy fix, it's not a simple solution, but again, budgets are tough. One last thing I did want to bring up is a lot of these --
Mr. Hayes, I do need you to wrap up.
One thing that was brought up is a lot of these things were proposed back when it was looking like Governor Rauner was going to be eliminating the distributive fund, and the problem is, right now, we have no budget, and now we have this $1.2 million shortfall in the permit fees, and so now you're making furlough cuts before we even have to deal with the possibility of other cuts coming from the state. So again, don't balance your budget on the backs of the workers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the CAFRA really state the real picture, the water utility? I don't believe it does. The new transparency website does not either. I think it's more or less 50 percent complete. There is no capital cost put into this to run this business, so it's not really, if you look at the page and understand it, and I think that council members should look and carefully understand, if you don't include capital costs with operation, you don't have a business. It doesn't make any sense. But if you start to play around with some of these numbers, you'll see it's pretty close depleted, which means it's bankrupt. Bankruptcy doesn't mean bankruptcy in the sense it's going to fold, because we residents will just pay more Waterville increases to take care of it. Transparency really is not about making statements, but it's about real facts, and that's really the issue here. On another item that came up at the last council meeting, there was a change order for water pipe elevation, and I explained that at AP&amp;W, and it appeared to go over some people's heads, but $160,000 to do that change order was ridiculous. And basically, it shows me that either the staff doesn't do what they're doing, they tried to blame the engineer, but it sounded like this was done over and over again several times. I think council ought to take some responsibility, ask some more questions, what's going on here with how we're running projects? Because if you're going to waste $100,000, as Mr. Hayes points out, it's money that the employees could use, basically, and I think that's a real problem, you know. And some years back, Alderman Baptiste said to me at a meeting that he thanked me for basically pointing things out with problems here. This council, what it does, it just passes things through and doesn't really deal with anything. It's basically covering up the mistakes, and they're being repeated over and over and over. And that's really a very bad situation. On the recycling center, I found out, even though you didn't do an appraisal, I found an article in the Tribune that showed that the recycling center of Mr. Bobkowitz stated was built for $4 million with city funds. That was in the Tribune. I have the article, I can send it to you, anyone who wants it. Basically, it was quoted in the Tribune that that's what it cost to build. So if you're planning to sell it for much less, I think a lot of us will have a problem with that, because frankly, we need the money for other things that should be used for recreation. If we get that money, it should be used for that. And really, and my last item, I was driving down Howard Street again, seeing them tear down another building. It seems like the city is owning most of Howard Street, and I really don't understand where there's a tax increment in this, that we're going to ever pay this tiff off. So I think it is very interesting that we own almost all the whole street, and there's no increment to be had. So it's very interesting to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Lonny Wilson, and some of you know me and some of you don't, depending on when and where I met you or talked to you, that's your opinion of me, but what I am is a lifelong Evanston resident. And I was told once by an Alderman, "Don't start my conversation like this," but I am. My family got here about 1867, so I kind of represent a foundation of Evanston, and these cuts that are coming in 2015, hopefully that we don't do what we normally do historically and put our cuts on the backs of those people who have also been the anchors to this town and to this place, and that we try to take this pill collectively, because it's going to be a really nasty pill, the way it looks, and I think all of us need to taste it, and not just one ward or one set of people or one set of anyone. And if we don't do that, I think we're, you know, we're keeping the, I don't know what that story is of diversity, it's not true, and we need to make sure that that happens. And that's really all I came here to say. I'm a little bit early, because I guess you guys are going to discuss it and throw it around, but as things do in the city, it'll probably be already done by the time it gets to this body. So I hope that we think about that as we're starting to cut, because every cut's going to cause a little bit of blood, and hopefully we share that pain collectively. So.
Thank you.
I'm representing the Evanston Minority Business Consortium, a group of minority-owned business people, women, business enterprises, and Evanston business enterprises that are interested in the economic development of our city. I pass out, I've given to the Clerk an announcement of a program that we are putting together, what we call a pre-apprenticeship program, to take some of the high-risk kids, the people who are causing the problems, the violence on the streets, et cetera, into job opportunities by teaching them first how to work, meaning getting to work on time, et cetera, training them for apprenticeship programs primarily in the construction trade, and also giving them insight into green industries. We're working with Kevin Brown and other entities throughout the Chicago area to put together a program that will be effective. I myself work with the Milwaukee Urban League in what they call the Labor Education Advancement Program, which is a similar program, and also in Chicago, getting women into the trade, so we have the expertise and the knowledge and the background to do it. The other thing I want to mention is that this whole thing moves toward trying to make the city not become Dodge City, become more of a livable place, reduce the violence, et cetera, and we need your support and help in doing this. We've met, I was in a meeting with one of our great civil servants, Chief Haddington, on the issue of stop and frisk, and I think that he is moving in the right direction. And as Mr. Wilson indicated, I grew up here, and with drive-by diversity was the order of the day, and today, the drive-by has slowed down, but we're still driving by the diversity. The other thing that I want to make clear about why this is feasible, Northwestern and the city of Evanston, within the city of Evanston, there have been billions of dollars of development. There's been over a billion dollars just at Northwestern. If 1 percent, 1 percent of those funds had been transferred to local contractors, we would have had millions of dollars that could have gone a long way to taking these kids out the street, giving them a job, career and hope, and stabilizing our community. So I think that we ought, I'm sorry, you as our community leaders, to think in terms of altering the minority programs so that contractors and people who live in Evanston could get a better chance at work and a job. I think what we have now is not adequate, and I hopefully that you will take that under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager, next is Special Orders of Business.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we're here this evening to give you a brief overview of where we stand with the current year budget, operating budget, as well as the capital improvement program. Marty Lyons, the Assistant City Manager, who's just walking in, checking on the severe weather statement that just came over the email. Hopefully, Marty, we're out of harms way at this point, but were you able to find out more as you walked back in?
Yes, Mr. City Manager, members of council. I did not see anything on our radar, and I did leave a message for public work, so we did have something heading north, all the way up by Waukegan, but nothing that looks like it's going to hit us right now.
National Weather Service issued a special severe weather statement, which included Evanston about 15 minutes ago, so we were just checking on that.
And when they do those and they reference the specific spots like Brookfield Zoo and Lincoln Park, so --
When they said the Lorraine H. Morton Civic Center, we were concerned, so. But apparently, we've dodged the tornado for tonight. So, Mr. Lyons, we're here to talk about the second quarter financial statement.
I'm not here. Ashley King is here to talk about the second quarter, so I'll let her do the speaking.
Hello. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, Clerk Green, City Manager Bobkowitz. My name is Ashley King. I'm the Assistant Director of Administrative Services, and the portion of the presentation that I'm going to go through is kind of our standard second quarter report. As you know, every month, we post the monthly financials on the city's website. These are line item detail, fund by fund, of what we are doing, where the money's being spent, where the money's coming into, so this is kind of a high-level overview. Whoops. Next, do I do enter? Oh, sorry. Too fast. Okay, so as of June 30th, general fund revenues were at 48.5 percent of budget, with general fund expenses at 45 percent of budget approximately. So obviously, neither one kind of met the 50 percent goal, but revenues are outpacing expenses. The ending fund balance was $19.5 million. This is approximately 21 percent as a fund balance, our fund balance policy is 16.6 Now, taking a look at revenue, again, revenue obviously does not come in 12 equal increments. We have a lot of things that come cyclically and annually for the city. So taking a look at things, it's approximately where we would expect at this time. It's in line with the past few years. The one that's kind of an outlier are the licenses, permits, and fees. Again, I know we've touched on building permits, and that will be discussed a little bit later, so that's the only one that in this list is kind of outside of the norm from what we would expect. Now, taking a look again at expenses, which also come at a variety of times. I know we have a lot of expenses that come during the summer months due to various park programs and other things that we do on a seasonal basis. However, none of the departments are over 50 percent of their budgets as of right now, so that's a great thing for us at the current point with the general fund. These are the enterprise funds. As you can see, the parking fund, again, revenues are exceeding expenses. One of the reasons to note that expenses are so far under budget is because there were quite a few capital projects that are being deferred, so those are no longer coming out of the budget for this year. Water and sewer funds are both under budget due to the extremely wet spring and the extremely wet June that we had. Water pumping and treating were both down. This means that we have fewer revenues and fewer expenses for both of these funds. And finally, solid waste. Revenues are exceeding expenses, which means we're able to chip away at the negative fund balance, so that's a great indicator there. The next two slides kind of group our funds into these various categories. Again, I looked at the past few years and where we were at this point. We're pretty much in line with where we should be. The thing I wanted to note is the capital fund. Obviously, we have not sold bonds yet this year, so that's why we don't have revenue coming into the capital fund in particular. Same thing for expenses. Again, capital is only at 11 percent. That's the one that really stands out here. That's because as of June 30th, we did not have a lot of the bills in yet. Obviously, construction season was still going on. We didn't have all of those hit the books. I would expect the third quarter financial statement to look significantly different, especially in this fund. So comparing the expenses for the whole city against the revenues, you could see that year-to-date revenues exceed expenses by about $10 million. So that's all of the funds. One of the things that we need to keep our eyes on as a city is the motor fuel tax money. Currently, since the state does not have a budget, they do not have the authority to distribute this money to municipalities. Evanston also continues to be cautious as the state works through their own budget issues, and we're looking for what the impacts on the municipalities would be. So as a result, until the state of Illinois passes their budget, the city needs to be very cautious regarding 2015 expenses. So that's kind of where we were as of June 30th, and with that, I turn it over to Erica Storley to talk about year-end estimates.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Clerk Green, and City Manager. I'm -- And in order to be proactive in light of the situation, we're trying to be thoughtful about the kinds of suggestions that we put forward for consideration. So some of those are hinging on the fact that the building permit revenue is going to come in a little bit lower than projected. But the building permit from the Northwestern Athletic Complex was very difficult to project when it would come in, later this year, earlier next year. We had only budgeted for $3 million, although we anticipated it to come in at $4 million. So we did have a cushion there. However, we will come in a little bit lower on the revenue, but we have had a great number of buildings come up this year and more permit revenue than we had additionally thought would come in. So a little bit lower than we thought, but overall, a positive note for Evanston. The telecommunications tax, earlier this evening, there was a question about the E911 Fund, which is funded by the 911 surcharge on landlines. This is separate from that. So the telecommunications tax is a steadily decreasing fund, or revenue for us, but we're definitely going to, next year, change our projections on what that would look like. And we're also going to put forward in the 2016 budget, the possibility of charging data plants, because the tax does not currently account for those. And as we know, that is the majority of what people are purchasing at present. Overall, we're anticipating that we're going to be a little, 2.4% short on revenues, and about 600, that equates to $663,000. If everything goes as we are looking at it right now, we would come in about $22,000 over budget in expenses. So that would equate to roughly a $586,000 shortage for the end of 2015, if we come in right around where we think we are going to. So some of the things that we've thought about and carefully considered for proposing for how we could mitigate some of this is the furlough day that has been talked about earlier today. We had originally talked about this, I think, in early March. So there was the consideration of Labor Day, Furlough Day, which has been taken off the table, but we have left on the table the possibility of the December 31st Furlough Day. In two weeks, when we come back for our special budget meeting on August 31st, we will talk about some revenue-enhancing measures that we would hope to put forward before the end of the year. Normally, we would roll these in with the budget and have them go into effect on January 1st, but in order to help the current situation for this current budget year, we would ask that these be considered for implementation on October 1st. That would be an increase in parking citation fees and fines, also an increase in fees for child restraint violations. It's up there as seatbelt violations, but we need to do a little bit more work on that before we come to you for review of that. And then, lastly, the fire department has come forward with what they think are better fee structure for ambulance transports. A lot of that is reimbursed by Medicare and Medicaid, and the fees that we're charging are not in line with comparable communities. So that's something that they would like to see considered as well. And a hiring freeze. This would go into effect on September 1st through the end of the year, and then we would start hiring again in the first of the year. Of course, there could be some considerations made for positions that were vital to the organization. And then, lastly, if we need to, we have the ability to transfer some money out of the IPBC, which is the Intergovernmental Pension Personnel Benefit Cooperative. So that's part of our overall health insurance funding. And we have a surplus in that fund right now of about $500,000. So we do have some leeway there if we needed to make a withdrawal from that. So this is the overall picture of where we are right now with taking effect the proposed increases in the fees and fines and the one-time transfer from the IPBC. This would put our fund balance back in line with the policy of, right there at 16.67. So that concludes my presentation for tonight. Does anybody have any questions before we move on to the CIP portion of the presentation?
Alderman Rainey.
Erica, I'm looking here at my marked-up report, and I can't find something that concerned me. That was our insurance fund. What's, remind me what the status of that is.
Current status of our insurance fund? I'll have to ask Marty to come up and speak to that.
I know, I read it. Now I can't find it again.
Good evening, members of council, Madam Mayor, Clerk Green, Manager Bobkowitz, Marty Lyons, Assistant City Manager. Alderman Rainey, the status of the Internal Service Fund, the insurance fund, it has approximately $1.1, $1.2 million in reserves in cash, but it has that $3.6 million, thereabouts, deficit in claims payable for all of the reserved claims in our workers' comp liability, all of those. So we, you know, we just adopted a reserve policy that said we wanted to try and get our cash up to a percentage of how much potential claims we have. So that's the Internal Service Fund. Our health insurance, though, through the cooperative, we do have a reserve there in excess of that amount. That's a $14 million program. And so we do have a reserve at the cooperative of $4 million, of which about $2.5 million needs to be used for claims payable. So while we don't have all the reserves on the liability side, as a part of being in the co-op, we do have to have the reserve. So that's a very nice position to be in by being in the co-op. We hold the money instead of, if we bought the insurance ourselves through Blue Cross, Blue Cross keeps all the money. You just pay the money in, and they keep all the reserves themselves. So we have a reserve, and that's where the $150,000 would come from, and that in no way would impact an ongoing rate change. So that, taking $150,000, I know that we heard a concern about a furlough day, you know, that being balanced on the backs of employees. That $150,000 would not impact rates that employees pay for healthcare.
Thank you, Alderman Brithwaite.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Marty, I know it's just a proposed number, but I was curious to know, what's your proposed increase for the ambulance fees that would generate $50,000?
That's actually a multi-level increase. So you would have increases to resident, non-resident, then how we interact with the Medicaid and Medicare. But I don't believe we're changing. If somebody only has Medicare, and that's all they're going to be able to pay, then we don't, what's called balanced bill. So if they can only pay the Medicare amount, then we don't go after them for our total amount for an Evanston resident that's only paying the Medicare amount.
So right now, I think the bill is right around 300 out-of-pocket, I'm guessing.
Isn't it? Approximately. And I think, Alderman Brithwaite, members of the council, because it's a larger issue, we wanted to bring it back as something separate, so we'll do that in two weeks. Fire chief is busy at other matters this evening, so we want to be respectful to his time as well, so we'll have it on the 31st.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Well, I thought over the years, we always raise it up to whatever the maximum is Medicare would pay. In other words, we never charge more than Medicare.
And that is true since adoption, but the downturn in the economy put that a little bit on the back burner. We were really trying to be sensitive to our revenue as a residence expense. So we did not, say, three years ago, raise it when we might have been able to. We held the line and held the line on expenses instead. So we'd like to take a look at it now.
But I don't, it's not an unusual increase, and we never raise it above the amount of reimbursement.
And again, Alderman Rainey, that's why I think one of the reasons we want to have the larger discussion with you, because it's not just a one number. It's a multiple circumstance issue. And again, Chief Clyburn will be here to help with that on the 31st.
Alderman Grover.
I'm having trouble on this one with the furlough day savings. And I don't know if it's the furlough day altogether or where we're targeting it. I don't know. I suspect it means a lot to our employees about losing a day's wages during the holidays. And wondered if as part of this discussion and collecting more information, we could find out what the average daily take-home is for our employees. Is this a few hundred dollars? You know what I mean?
Certainly, we could gather that information and bring it back for the 31st, but this is just one of a number of options on the table. And if the city council directs us, we'll go in a different direction.
I'd like a different direction on just this one. It's only a portion of the different things that we're considering, and maybe there are other sources of revenue. And let's hope we never have to invoke any of them.
It's possible.
Thank you very much.
And the second piece of this now, Madam Mayor, members of the council, is an overview of where we're at with the CIP. Mr. Lyons?
All right. Did I just go too far? Yeah, let's see here. We're going to go with the page up. Okay, well, this is where we just ended. I got one more up. All right. So one of the things that we ended that presentation with was how low our expenditures were in capital. And as Ms. King pointed out, that's just the expense. I want to make sure that the council understands that our projection is to be at $30 million out of $44 million for the year with our capital projects. And what's even more important is that bottom number, that 57 of 71 projects. So that's the capital improvements plan at the back of the budget book, 71 projects listed that we're going to get four out of five done. And the reason that you see that discrepancy is we have some large projects that aren't moving forward. So Sheridan Road was budgeted, but for a variety of reasons, we're going to do part of the water main first and then do the resurfacing later. Emerson Ridge-Green Bay is going to be mostly in 2016. The Crown Center was budgeted at $2 million for design. We're going to spend approximately $400,000 for the fundraising and move the design off into the future. So we have a lot of large projects that, as we grapple with them, we're pushing them off a half a year, a year, and they're going to show up in the 2016 year instead of in the 2015 year. So I think it's important to note, though, we have a lot of small projects that, whether it's staff working in facilities or residents dealing with sidewalks or streets, that are being completed in a timely manner. So, and why is that? So again, Loveless Park was a big one, not getting the grant for that. Crown Center I just referenced, Sheridan Road also. And I've read the Sheridan Road one three times, and if you can get that one to make sense, I keep reading it. But it's a very, it's very detailed, but Sheridan Road is a project that we've worked hard with Northwestern to make sure that we get the water main done at the right time. And there's two kinds of water main, one where we're going to line the water main, and another where we're going to do open cut. And then we're going to come back through and do the actual paving. And we're also working with Northwestern to have a reconstruct instead of a three-inch overlay, because right now, that road does not have the proper base. And so we're working on a lot of design issues with Sheridan Road, one of the reasons to have it deferred. I believe we noted this with council at one point in time, but we broke the capital improvements plan, the street portion, into capital improvements plan one, two and three. So CIP 1 was done, we're almost done paying on it. CIP 2 was deferred. So with the deferral of CIP 2, that's Hastings, Main and Chicago, we've been doing a lot of other things with those dollars on tonight's agenda. For instance, the additional $50,000 for pavement markings, the $150,000 additional for patching. We're trying to make sure we keep up with the total number of lane miles being repaired or maintained, even when we found that it was, in this case, that we should defer the CIP 2 due to horrendous bid prices that came in. The water prices were almost double what the engineers estimate. So because we bid late in the year, we felt that it would be better to bring that one back and bid it again and see if we get better pricing for effectively the same work. Just a few photographs. The, if you get a chance, the north tank is nearly done. I had a chance to see while it was painted. And they do keep that shroud up, because when it's in primer stage, you get a lot of phone calls when it's not the color that you promised. So they put the shroud back up all the time, but we are almost done. They're actually moving all the sandblasting equipment, already at the south tank and moving forward.
He did it the color that was the primer because of that.
Nice picture of the different elements of the civic center. We've had so many people visit from other communities, taking a look at what we're doing with the porous pavement. So that's a really nice thing for our own engineering and our planning staff to see that. A lot of people interested in all three of the coverings. If you don't recall, we're doing paver, porous concrete and porous asphalt as three different types of surfaces. What street is this? Pop quiz. So yes, that is Ridge, and just finished all the curb all along Ridge and the paving, so don't need to belabor that. So in 2015, you have these projects, and when you look at this on the website, or especially with your iPad, when you can zoom in a little bit, it's certainly a little bit easier to see, but we wanted to show all of the projects that have been done. So this is not the capital improvements budget. This is what we've worked on. And depending on the icon or key that you're looking at, you have bike path, water and street, or street only, and as well as all of our facilities that have been worked on this year. So this last one, again, it's really, we had it in the presentation and then took it out and then put it back in. It comes in handy, especially with the media, to have this kind of a table that can be pulled apart and maybe even also used by you all at ward meetings to talk about specific streets. So these are streets that have been done, and as you move across, it's how they're being funded, whether it's motor fuel tax, capital improvements, bond funds, water or sewer. So just a listing of all the streets. And as you see down at the bottom, I referenced capital improvements plan two, so that's one that you don't see any dollars in, because we're not doing anything with that this year. So this is a map of the tentatively planned projects for next year. We will be bringing at the August 31st meeting, projects for 2016. So we're just getting a head start for the presentation to say these are ones that are in the pipeline. Ashley, how many of these are these carryover projects?
I think most.
Yeah, so most of these are of the projects we didn't complete, then these come over as, I'd say, top priority, because they've already been approved by you all once.
Excuse me, Marty. Alderman Rainey has a question.
I've been to numerous meetings and received many emails about the bike lane, protected bike lane on Dodge from Howard to Church. And I read the chart over the weekend, and it says, "Project not moving forward in 2015, no bids were submitted." Did we put this out and nobody bid?
That's correct. It was very surprising. It was not overly complicated, but we received no bids. We will bid it again. It's, in general, you heard us earlier talking about whether or not there, earlier in the year, talking about whether there were competing projects of a large nature. For instance, 294, we don't think it's necessarily projects of a large nature, but building has picked up, as noted in our own building permits everywhere, and you still have contracting firms and construction firms doing what they do best, that is managing their funds. So they're not gearing up just yet. They're working everybody they've got and every piece of equipment they've got before they add to staff and end up being overcommitted if the economy doesn't stay strong. So we're seeing any bids late in the year, they're going to be a little bit higher. Our hope is to get bids out in the middle of winter and get better pricing. We won't be the only cities that think of that, but we're still going to give it a shot. So if any specific questions, again, we will follow up in two weeks at the 31st to talk about 2016 projects and how we move forward. Also, in
as the, as the fall continues, but I truly believe that it will be something we'll need to do this year. And quite honestly, my hope is that all this, as you've heard from us tonight, will be enough for balancing the 2015 budget. I'm concerned that the state could totally upend this plan, but we needed a plan, and we have a plan now, and we'll make the best of it, and when the state finally adopts a budget, if we need to change the plan, we will, but we couldn't wait any longer prudently. We needed to make some adjustments or move forward with some adjustments now.
Uh, thank you, Alderman Grover.
Madam Mayor, do we need a motion on the two special orders of business? City manager, do you need a motion?
I would just ask that you receive and file both.
I move that we receive and file the 2015 mid-year budget report and the 2015 capital improvement plan mid-year report.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. The consent agenda is as follows. Approval of the minutes of the meeting of July 27. Administration and Public Works met this evening and ask your approval of the payroll Credit card $184,877.05. Ask your approval of maintenance plan agreement for Sherman Plaza at a cost of $115,000. Ask your approval of sole source purchase of Talmage Streetlight poles and fixtures from Gray Bar Electric for a total amount of $98,313.50. Your approval is requested for contract renewal for towing and other related services with North Shore Towing, estimated annual expenditure of $23,000. And your approval is also requested for contract with Joseph, Madam Mayor, this item is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair, A 3.4. Approval is requested in honor of Lonnie of three vehicle equipment purchases, an Elgin Street Sweeper in the amount of $185,820, Bobcat Toolcat Sidewalk Tractor with Attachments in the amount of $69,479, and a Ford Escape for $19,513. We request approval also for an extension of contract for condo refuse collection with Lake Shore Recycling Systems in the amount of $6.30 per condo unit. There are renewals involved here. Approval of a contract is requested with Triggy Construction for paving of various alleys in the amount of $993,141.84. We ask your approval of the 2015 CDVG Sidewalk Replacement Project Contract with Schroder &amp; Schroder in the amount of $106,145. Approval is requested for Central Street Emergency Bridge Repair Contract Award with Alliance Contractors in the amount of $162,975. We ask you approve the contract with Silk Screen Express for AFME uniforms in the amount of $140,870 over a three-year period. Approval is requested for the Capital Improvement Program, three street resurfacing construction contract with J.A. Johnson in the amount of $917,719. Approval is requested for additional funding for the 2015 pavement marking program in the amount of $50,000 with Superior Road Striping. Your approval is requested also for additional funding for pavement patching by J.A. Johnson Paving in the amount of $150,000 for additional, 21 additional patching locations totaling 6,500 square yards. Approval of a 2015 Parking Access and Revenue Control System Contract and Installation Change Order Number One, allowing for credit card in and credit card out payment process in the amount of $38,136. Approval is also requested for Change Order Two, Large Diameter Sewer Rehab at Cleveland Street. It will reduce the contract amount by $54,155. Request your approval for another change order for the 2014 CIPP Sewer Rehab Contract with Insitiform Technologies, adding $3,010 to the contract. Approval of a change order is also requested for the Emerson Ridge Green Bay Project for Engineering Services for Water Main Improvements in the amount of $56,250. We ask approval for a single source purchase of public safety software from Sun Guard Public Sector and Xerox Government Systems LLC in the amount of $543,541. Let's see, and $51,000, let me see, $35 to upgrade the current CAD computer-aided dispatch software for police and fire. Resolution 81R15 is for approval and amends the 2015 Emergency Telephone System Fund Budget by $240,961 for a total of $1,416,934. We've accepted and placed on file the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and we request that you approve that. Approval is also requested to place on file the Post-Employment Benefit Report of December 31st, 2014. School District 202 Salt Agreement is for approval for the 2015-16 school year in the amount of $76.69 per ton, as well as approval being requested for District 65 Salt Agreement for the next school year in the amount of $76.69 per ton. An application is being requested for approval for storefront modernization program for 928-930 Chicago Avenue to Tript donation LLC and the owner of 928-930, an amount not to exceed $10,503. Resolution 80R15 endorses the application of Little Beans Evanston LLC to the Cook County Assessor for Class 7A Status Designation for Commercial Development of the vacant property located at 430 Asbury Avenue. Ordinance 102015 authorizes the city manager to execute a sale contract for city-owned real property at 1941 Jackson. The committee, this is two community partners for affordable housing. The committee approved introduction and suspended the rules, and the committee chair will move for action. Ordinance 83015 is for action, authorizing the sale of surplus fleet vehicles at public auction. Ordinance 97015 is for action and amends the city code to establish a four-way stop control at the intersection of Lake and Gray. Ordinance 101015 regulating panhandling and soliciting activities is being requested by staff to be held and considered at the September 28 meeting. Planning and Development Committee met this evening and recommend introduction of Ordinance 105015 granting a special use for a daycare center, child, a child daycare center, Little Green Treehouse at 2812, 2814 Central. Ordinance 11, Ordinance 112015 is for introduction and grants zoning relief for the number of dwelling units, number of parking spaces, and parking lot aisle width at 609 South Boulevard. Ordinance 98015 is for action, amending the zoning map to rezone 1402, 1408 Brown Avenue from R2 to R4. Ordinance 106015 is for action, grants a special use for a type-two restaurant, Red Robin Burger Works, at 1700 Maple Avenue. Ordinance 10415 is for action and amends the city code to modify window sign regulations, and the Economic Development Committee proposes approval of Resolution 82R15, Service Provider Agreement for the Special Service Area Number Six, and this is for action. Madam Mayor, there are no recommendations for appointments, and I therefore move the consent agenda.
Uh, thank you, Alderman Rainey. It's been moved and seconded to pass the consent agenda. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Tendem. Oh, sorry. Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Eight, zero.
The consent agenda passes. Alderman Rainey, could we have Administration and Public Works?
Yes, yes.
A 3.4.
A 4. Which number was it?
3.4.
3.4.
3.4. Okay, here we go. The A 3.4 is a contract with J., Joseph J. Henderson and Company. We have referred this to the city manager's office for review with the legal department, et cetera, and asking them to bring back a solution for us, because the issue that concerned us is the bid that was selected is $150,000 over the low bid. So we weren't able to conclude a way to deal with it, so the city manager is going to have his office advise us. Then we have the item at Ordinance 102015, authorizing the city manager to execute a sale contract for city-owned real property at 1941 Jackson Avenue to community partners for affordable housing. Two-thirds majority vote is required on this. Madam Mayor, I moved introduction and suspension of the rules, and I move for action on this matter.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to pass Ordinance 102015, authorizing the city manager to execute a sale contract for city-owned real property at 1941 Jackson Avenue, seeing no lights indicating anyone wants to discuss this. City Clerk, could you call the roll for action on this item?
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Nine, zero.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes. Alderman Holmes, did you have anything?
Alderman Rainey, that completes.
Madam Mayor. Yes, one more.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Rainey.
I just wanted to mention, Alderman Holmes reminded me that we should point out that this was a house built by ETHS.
Yes, it was.
And sold to an ETHS employee.
And sold to, there's more to the story. Sold to an ETHS employee. This is really a fantastic story.
About as good as it gets, yeah.
I hope it gets in the National League of Cities Magazine someday, what happened here. Beautiful story.
It should get in the New York Times.
Well, yeah, that should.
Alderman Holmes.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Nothing, all right. Moving right along, we are at call of the wards. Alderman Tendem.
No reports tonight, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want first mention of a seventh ward meeting on Thursday, September 17th, location to be determined.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Well, I just wanted to thank Lonnie for all of his work and his thoughtfulness. One time, neighbors at work was in desperate need of a vehicle to carry their ladders and paint cans around for the handyman program that they ran, and we had a vehicle that was on the auction block, or ready to, you know, like, ready to be sent out to pasture, and he figured out a way to help neighbors at work. And I, just the nicest man, and extremely productive and very effective, so.
Yeah, he's done a terrific job for us.
Really, really, and because some of us were here before him. So, thank you, Lonnie.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, no report.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to remind everyone of the upcoming first ward meeting on Tuesday, September 1st, at the Public Library, 7 to 9 p.m. Please be there.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn.
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson. Thank you. Alderman Holmes.
You're invited to ice cream on Thursday night at the fifth ward meeting, so if you want to come have ice cream with us on this coming Thursday, please do so, 7 o'clock.
That's always a good meeting.
Do you like ice cream?
Thank you. Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion?
I have a motion pursuant to 5 ILCS compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A. I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding litigation. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are 5 ILCS 120/2A and C 11.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, the ayes have it.